I would like to call this meeting of the Lennox Public Schools School Committee to order at 6:00 PM. Please note that the meeting is being broadcast live on CTV, educational channel 1302, and will be rebroadcast on the same. This is the one time of the year that I get to open the meeting as the chair until nominations are heard for a permanent chair, at which time I pass the gavel to the permanent chair, who then will work on the nomination for the vice chair and the secretary. So the way this works is it will open the floor to nominations. Nominations don't need to be seconded, but they can be seconded. And then, once all of the nominations for chair are heard, it will close the nomination process, and we will have a roll call vote. So, I now open the meeting to the nomination process for chair. Would anyone like to make a nomination?
I'd like to make a nomination. I'd like to nominate Orin Cass. I think you did a fantastic job last year, and thank you for doing such a great job. You should at least get the chance to refuse to...
I just didn't intend you to say we don't need it, and I'm not going to second that.
Okay. All right. Are there any other nominations for anybody else? Hearing none, would you accept that nomination?
Yes, please do.
Okay. Then I now close the nomination process, and we'll go to a vote, a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Kirby.
A little rusty here. Megan Kirby.
It's aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Jason Messenger, aye.
Orin Cass, aye.
Veronica Fenton, aye.
Michael Dupont, aye.
Kim Graham, aye.
Kim Warner, aye.
Orin Cass is officially unanimously voted in as chair of the school committee, and I hand the meeting over to you, sir.
All right. Well, thank you, and thank you, everyone, for your support. I will endeavor to chair, again, as we have been chairing lately.
Thank you.
We have now the, I guess, vice chair goes through the same process, and so would be open for nominations.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a nomination, please.
Yes.
I would like to nominate, if you will accept, Michael Dupont for vice chair. If you would be willing to accept that.
Yeah, I will accept.
I should have talked about it ahead, and I think you are ready, if you would like to do it, it would be great.
Thank you very much. I would be delighted to do so.
I'd be happy to second that, because I was going to nominate you also.
Hearing no other nominations, we will go through the same roll call vote.
Megan Kirby, aye.
Jason Messenger, aye.
Orin Cass, aye.
Veronica Fenton, aye, and thank you.
Michael Dupont, aye, and thank you.
Kim Graham, aye.
Kim Warner, aye.
All right, we have a vice chair, should I meet a tragic end at any time in this year.
Oh, God. You know, if you believed in, you know, stinkies, as they say.
That's how you ward it away.
Yeah.
And finally, the same process for secretary, which sometimes requires volunteer.
I'd like to nominate Kim Graham.
Sure.
I would second that, even though we don't need to.
Sure.
Hearing no other nominations, and noting Kim Graham's extreme excitement, extreme enthusiasm for the role.
I would second.
A final roll call vote.
Megan Kirby, aye.
Jason Messenger, aye.
Orin Cass, aye.
Veronica Fenton, aye, thank you.
Michael Dupont, aye.
Kim Graham, aye.
Kim Warner, aye. There we go. That was part of the day.
We are set. And with that, we can move on to the hearing of visitors, if we have anyone wishes to speak.
We do have Tom Fielding from the negotiation committee for the LEA wishes to say a few words about the process. I'd also like to, I've been at a number of events lately, and Tom has been at every one of them. Thank you. So, I've been teaching here at Lennox for six years, and before that, I taught in Dalton at Neskes Middle School for 24 years. And in all of those years, I've never been on a negotiation committee before. And so I was a little hesitant to kind of start this late in my career, but I did. I thought about it, and so I'm here to talk to you a little bit about interest-based bargaining, or IBB, and how the process went this year, which went very well. So, being kind of this teacher, and trying to be a student, and too, I brought all my stuff with me. I brought my pens, my folder, my notebook, my printed-out contract, and my laptop, so I could access all the documents I needed to access. Unfortunately, I didn't need any of those, because Mr. Orin Cass had every document ready to go, and projecting it on the screen for all of us, which actually opened the door for me to do something probably more important than taking notes, and I was listening. So I was able to actually kind of focus and really participate in, you know, certainly with the listening part, and then eventually with some ideas of my own, this whole discussion process in this interest-based bargaining process. One of the things that amazed me, really, were the discussions, and the direction they went in, and the ease in which they took place. Because I was, well, I guess because I was nervous, I was thinking this might be tricky, but it didn't turn out to be like that at all. One weird, really weird thing, everyone kind of like looked at each other in the eyes when they were talking. They actually had good eye contact. People listened, and waited for people to finish talking. So there were some amazing things happening. And then there was the question part. People who were unsure about what the interest meant would ask questions, to try to figure out so that they could participate in the conversation effectively. And then sometimes they're also asking about the context in which these interests might be playing out. And so it was really, it was a very comfortable setting. The, uh, let's see. You know, professional probably is a word I could use for these discussions, and they were cordial and productive, but I think it went beyond that. Especially with like each meeting, I think the word that kind of comes to my mind to kind of capture it is almost like neighborly. It was just a very comfortable interaction between people. Now, one of the things that I found very interesting, and I wasn't expecting this until I got there, is that, you know, we had the big conference table, but it wasn't the school committee on one side and the teachers' union on the other side. We mixed it up. Matter of fact, as I would say, it was mix-up day every time we had a meeting, because we didn't sit in the same spots, we sat next to different people. And I think there was a great kind of outcome from that. One, there was social interaction, but two, there was also just this, I don't know, I think willingness to interact. So it actually worked out really great. There was a point during the negotiations that while Dr. Collins was sitting across from me, he must have read something in my face, and so he said, "Tom, you got something on your mind you want to share?" And I did. I was stewing about, you know, this proposal, the ideas that were being generated, and I wasn't sure where I was, you know, going and where the conversation was going. And so then he kind of opened me up, and that moment kind of proved to me that there weren't sides in this negotiation. Actually, correction, there was one side. We were all on the same side, trying to negotiate this contract. So that was a big eye-opening moment for me, thank you. So, let me just kind of wrap some of this up. There was a moment, a little bit later on, when I was walking out, and things were going so smoothly. And so I was walking out with the MTA rep who was working with us, and his name's Alex Malley, and I said to him, "Alex, this seems to be going really well. What is your take on this? How do you feel like this is going?" And he said, with a big smile on his face and confidence in his tone, he said, "It is going great. This is exactly how IBB should work every time." And so it kind of made me feel proud to be part of the, you know, how it was working out. But it also made me happy that things were going so well. So I was a little nervous, just because it was going so smoothly. I wasn't sure if I was missing something. Anyways, let me just wrap this up. So, we turned out to be one group, trying to, you know, work with and come up and find common ground for these different interests. And that worked. We found that common ground, we found these common solutions together. And this table, this table turned out to be a table of varying perspectives, but it became a safe place, definitely for me. I was, I felt safe to share my ideas, but it was also a safe place where people could build on different ideas of each other's, and to, eventually, it was this safe place where we, as a full group, one group, were able to do some very valuable work for the district. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Well, I should say, as a member of the committee, I felt the attack the same way, and just really valued, like you said, that partnership. And I think your unquestionable victory in the best food petition.
Thank you.
Tom's chili was by far the top catered session.
Yeah, I didn't bring up the food part, but that was pretty honest.
And I think we ended up with a contract that is fair, and we're all really proud of. And we will, it's on our agenda for the evening, so we'll go through the details of it, and hopefully approve it from our end.
Yes. Thank you very much again.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Enjoyed the experience.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
I wonder if that's the only time in the contract negotiations that people say, "I enjoyed that."
I enjoyed it? You don't want to enjoy too much, I suppose. But I was...
It was, I had you standing at the table, I could repeat everything you said, but I agree with everything he said. It was a really good experience. It was open, it was honest, it was thoughtful. There was, you know, it wasn't contentious at all. It was, it was a really good process. I liked the interest-based process a lot.
If there are no other visitors, correspondence, we did have one correspondence that I've circulated to the group from Ms. Kirby, who's now here with us, so we will continue to address those issues as the year proceeds. And then, on the board report, wanted to start by introducing slash welcoming slash welcoming back the new members. I've certainly had a chance to talk with both of you, I know others on the committee have, and we are delighted to have you here joining us, so welcome aboard. I guess, I haven't prepared you for this, you can pass, but if you wanted to take a minute to just say hi, and the thing you're most excited to do, favorite character from Friends is always a good icebreaker. Do you want to go first?
Well, I can say that I've never watched Friends, I'm sorry to offend anybody, but I'm happy to be here. I think you're going to have a really great experience. I'd love to hear a little bit more about what you are excited to participate in.
I mean, I'm really excited to be involved, and I know the involvement like my folks had growing up is really kind of a thing that I want to be able to emulate, you know, being involved and being able to build the community, not just like that, that's going to be right for my kids, right, but like building a community where you feel that like it's, it's right for all of the kids that are there. And so I'm really excited to get involved and figure out just how all of this works, I guess.
Awesome.
Well, welcome. The schedule, we looked at briefly last time, if anyone saw anything in it, like, oh, my sister's getting married that Monday night, or something like that, questionable night to get married, but we don't judge here. Now, or before our next meeting, would be a good time to raise it, otherwise that will become the official schedule for next year. The one other thing to note is that we will try to schedule a workshop for over the summer, when we can. We'll probably do it over at town hall, and block out a good chunk of time to, we want to do some strategic plan stuff, and also just think about what's on the docket for the coming year. So finding the overlap of summer calendars is always challenging, but there is always the one day that falls out the bottom, so I will email the group to solicit your availability, and we will try to get that scheduled as well. And then the other thing that I will count as scheduling is just a note about subcommittees, because we still have the subcommittees that have been running throughout this year. My inclination is to wait until after the workshop to formulate subcommittees for the coming year, make sure everybody's doing what they want, and we still have a quorum on every committee, should something come up that needs action over the next month, have. So my inclination would be to just sort of leave things, if something comes up, we'll cover it, but otherwise, I'm assuming there won't be any regular meetings of the subcommittee during that time, unless anyone had anything they were eager to get on an agenda soon.
The only one thing, if I may phrase it, is that, thank you to the administration of the high school, we're still working on the issue of the election for the student advisory committee, and if, assuming that happens, the question is, I have been concording that and doing that as part of student engagement. If the group is comfortable in doing that, there is a, there's a small training manual from the MASCE. I'd like to sit down with the students, the students, to at least just get them acumen as to what this is. I think it would be great, I don't know if we'll get it to the end of the year, but at some point to also organize an event with the other student advisory committees, maybe we could even host, and MASCE could come do that. That probably could be addressed at the workshop, but if it's okay, I'd like to get started with at least having the students understand what this is about, what's happening, and connect them with, you know, resources so they can plan. They're not going to be really active over the summer, but so they can think about what they want to do for next year, if that's okay.
I think that sounds great. If you need others involved, definitely let us know.
And, well, I can certainly, I can certainly, ultimately, what we'll do is we have to appoint one person as the liaison for the student advisory committee, and we can decide that as part of like subcommittees as well.
Yeah.
And then, the favor, they're supposed to, according to the, supposed to meet approximately every other month with the committee, to just address issues, and then as needed. So I can also share the document that's MASCE training with the entire committee, just so people can see what's in there, as well as some of the other references that I've shared with Marcus Hasbain, Leevus, and Jeri.
Yep. Sounds good.
If that's okay.
Absolutely.
I'm up and running, and then we'll work all together for the coming year, and we'll just be, if I can get...
All right. Sure. Thank you. All right, I think we've set a record for the longest before reaching the approval of the prior meeting's minutes, but we can do that now.
I can move to approve the minutes of April 14th, if I remember that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the...
Do you want to know two abstentions?
And two abstentions, Amy.
Yes.
And the school physician's contract, which I believe we must formally approve each year, but...
Correct. Yes.
And so this is, as required, we have a physician essentially on contract to be the medical provider associated with the school. I believe we have the same one for the school of all kinds of health. Has never presented any problems, so we could have a motion to approve the contract.
I move to approve the position contract as chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Noted your first official vote.
There you go.
It is approved.
And then last in the board report is an update of policy JICFB, which is our bullying prevention and intervention plan. I think this is something we might also want to take a look at at the workshop or later, as we just review how we've been doing on this, but in this case, there are a few items that were just highlighted by Desi as essentially advised or required by state law to be consistent with their expectations. And so you'll see no real substantive change in how we handle things, but a couple of clarifications, and then also a notification to parents of all the resources that they have available to them.
I move that we accept the updates of policy JICFB, bullying prevention and intervention plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is updated, and we're over to you.
All right. We have, as the end of every year after April vacation, and we move toward the closing of the school year, we have lots of events. So, just some of the, some of the highlights, the high school band concert, the middle school play, the prom, of course, the national merit scholarship program, the, there was a national merit scholarship for those students. AP testing and MCAS testing is still happening, and we have the art exhibit for the whole month of May at the town library. There's over 175 pieces of student art. The gallery has the same hours as the library, so that is Tuesday through Thursday, 10:00 to 7:00 PM, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday, 10:00 AM to 5:00 AM, and I encourage people to go see element of Jess's students' art there. The, there were seven, there were seven ninth graders who raised over $2,500 for a local student who had a heart transplant through a typhoid. So kudos, kudos to them. A small number of students raised a significant amount of money. Thursday night at 5:30 is the special education parent advisory committee. They came and spoke, meet before last, to us, and any students who'd be interested in that. And the question is, is it here, or is it will be here, or at Morris? Do we know? CPAC? It's going to be at Morris?
Morris.
Okay, thank you. Morris, all right. The middle school band concert is May 15th at 7:00 here in the Duffin. The chorus and jazz concert will be the 20th at 7:00 in the Duffin. Kindergarten information night will be at Morris Wednesday, May 21st at 6:00. Family, family night for the rising sixth graders, so the current fifth graders, will be here Tuesday, May 20th at 5:30 PM. And there will be an art show and chorus concert at Morris on Thursday, the 22nd, at 6:00 PM. And a couple of other events have recently happened, like Books Before Bed, which was last week, and very well attended, I think there was over 100 people in attendance. And both the principals wanted to make sure that I mentioned last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and the teachers, the parents truly showed their love to the teachers. They were, they were pampered a bit with food and other recognitions, which was very The end-of-year events, it's, it is on the agenda, it's a long list. Check it, because sometimes things do get moved around. And next, we have, Ian Dupree is going to tell us a little bit about the French field trip for February 2026. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, I'm here to ask your approval for a trip that I'd like to take the kids on in February next year to Marseille. It's a trip that's really cultural-heavy, immersion as always. Marseille, because it has a lot of different communities that we can dig into, a lot of opportunities to meet and talk to people, get into markets, get into communities, get to really interact in ways that we can't do in Paris, for example. That's usually the first question, so I just thought I'd head it off. And I'm excited about it, so I hope you had a chance to just look through a little bit. There are a lot, there's a lot of explanation here about Marseille itself, but there are a lot, I have a lot of kids that, it's possible, I have about 30 kids, that I could take, I don't believe that all the kids will go on it, but that's kind of my pool. And then, well, I hope they all do, but I, you know, we'll see. But if there are questions, you have the answer.
I just have one question. The form that's put in here, I know on the action room we have the dates, but the form that was submitted did not have specific dates of the trip.
I didn't have yet the dates next year for the February vacation. I can guess, but that's why I didn't put it in. It's February vacation, whatever the specific dates are for next year.
And then my other question is, it says yourself and one chaperone to be determined.
Right. And that's because we haven't yet hired a French teacher for next year, and my first instinct would be to offer whoever that is the opportunity to travel with the group. That would be my first instinct.
So my question was, typically for that number of students, 20 to 30, it would be more than two chaperones, so do you have plans to try and pull somebody else up? But it's a lot, 30 kids is a lot of kids with two chaperones.
If it was 30, I would be pushing for another person, absolutely. According to the number here, like the cost, they've said, they've kind of given me a chart here, and it says, you know, if you have 20 to 28, two people are, two faculty are free, are included in the price. Then they have three educators on site, so they have three people on the ground once we get there that will be with us. So I'll have to dig in a little bit to know, like, you know, are they going to be with our group the entire time, you know, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM? And so that might be okay, if it's just about the two Lennox people managing the airport. I still might not be okay with that, but I'll have to, I'll have to work through, once I know exactly how many, how many kids sign up. But I don't want to raise the price in any way, shape, or form, unless I think it's absolutely necessary.
I know it's so early.
You know, it's early, but I agree.
Safety first.
Safety first. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, no. The safety is the most important thing, but you don't have to keep an eye on the cost as well, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions about that?
I mean, been to Marseille, it's exciting.
Yeah, I've been there twice, but I haven't, you know, getting really into the community, instead of being on the outside as a tourist, like, that's exciting to me. So, yeah.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the field trip request for the trip to Marseille for February of 2026. Subject to updates as needed.
Sure. Yeah, I'm available for any questions you have, so.
I'll second. Oh, excuse me, I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm honored. Yes.
Next, we have two donations from Pignotelli Electric. One, they worked on the scoreboard, and the other on the shot clock. The shot clock was, Lily did not charge us, it was 137.50 worth of work, and the scoreboard was 175, even, worth of donated work, if you're willing to accept the donation.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the donation from Pignotelli Electric, all their hard work.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And with our gratitude, yes.
Yes, right, yes. Good friends to this boy.
Always helpful.
Yes, they are. All right, and then we move on to my end cycle of superintendent's goals for the year. I did, I did... I did, I did pass out something, which will be available to everyone following the meeting. So what I want to point out first of all is speak about sustained focus through multi-year goals. And effective goals are not one-year checkboxes. They should be part of a larger thoughtful multi-year vision. The most impactful improvement efforts are those that are built over time with intentionality and coherence. In Lennox Public Schools, my goals serve as strategic through-line guiding decisions, aligning initiatives and ensuring that progress is not only achieved but sustained. You will see a connection, a connectedness between my goals, admin team goals, school improvement goals and strategic planning as well as professional development. This long-term approach allows us to deepen our impact, adapt thoughtfully and remain focused on what matters most, meaningful outcomes for students in a safe environment. So the first goal was brave and safe spaces and a sense of belonging to ensure physical and emotional safety for students and staff while promoting a culture of inclusion and well-being. And so very, I'll quickly run through some of these highlights. So of core beliefs, the, the school committee, it underlines everything, right? The school committee formulated and adopted a set of values, attitudes and, and core beliefs. These are what, what are the guidelines, the guardrails for the decisions that we, that we make and underpin what, what we do. And administrative cohesiveness. So we've been working to develop a stronger, more unified leadership team committed to collaboration, trust and shared accountability. And, and to that end, every one of them as individuals are very capable. But when we put the group together, we get a, we get a synergy that's really more than the sum of its parts. The labor relationships, as, as you heard from, as you heard from Tom earlier, I think we have been building a very respectful and solution-focused relationship with the ELA for units A and C as well as the local 473 for our custodians. Positive behavioral interventions and supports. Principal Kelly has been working at this for a while and expanding it every year and really promoting consistent behavioral expectations and emotional safety for all students. The work that she does with this, if they had an award for this in the state, I am confident that Morris would win that award. The ADL peer leadership, we had 17 students trained as peer leaders this year in allyship, inclusion and bias prevention. And that is, that's going to run, they've got, they're kind of coming up soon. Restorative practices. Dr. Ames and Mr. Haas have been working redesign the student support center to replace it as exclusionary discipline with a relationship-focused strategies, trying to, trying to, trying to shift that to more restorative practices. The staff wellness and welcome initiatives, we've been trying to foster a connection through our wellness groups and onboarding support when, when we are bringing new staff on. The climate surveys, so we, we were using last year's climate surveys and then this year we had, we put out the initial one and we will be putting out the end of the year one as well, but to get feedback on the school culture. And, and it does, we unpack this as a team and we, we, it influences our decision-making. The facilities and physical safety, you remember when I first came on, we, we partnered with the smart security partners and did an assessment of both buildings. And following that, we stipended a facilities coordinator for this year. And that has been a wonderful value and he's been able to help us prioritize and work on securing like our entry points, our hallways. We're about to do, about to put a safety coating on glass in key areas throughout both schools that will prevent someone from being able to access a classroom or the building through glass. It will, it'll take them longer to get through than it would take the cavalry to arrive for us. External consultants, we partnered with Changemakers for Good and also the Mass Safe Schools Program for expert guidance. We had a couple of, we had a couple of families that had students that were struggling to, to feel included and we sought expertise to help manage those situations. And then the proposed classroom addition, the eight new classrooms, including three science labs, it's going to ease crowding, improve transitions and enhance student well-being. And then moving on to effective instruction.
Well, we should pause after each one in case there are any.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Are there any questions about number one? Okay. All right. Effective, effective instruction, teacher knowledge and skill. This goal is to promote instructional practices grounded in clear objectives and responsive data-informed adjustments. And the, the very first piece of this is our bringing on Principal Kelly to be our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. And I didn't expect that she would get through the middle school this year. She is highly efficient and she has been able to work so pre-k through a in supporting lessons and planning and formative assessment practices and instructional coherence. And we are, we're, we're on, we are on track to maybe make her, to hopefully make her transition earlier than our original plan. Clear written objectives and formative practices to reinforce through coaching and feedback cycles and shared expectations, again, led by our CIA Director. Evaluator training and interator reliability. And the interator reliability just means that if multiple people were to give you the evaluation of the same lesson, that they would be within a pretty tight zone. And it wouldn't be, you know, one would say that you did very well and the other one would be like, no, you need improvement. The inter, the, our staff needs to have faith that we can, that regardless of who gives their evaluation, they're all going to be trained using the same tools, have the same training and that they're going to fall within a pretty, a pretty tight zone. So reinforced through movement toward all educators using consistent research-based system and tools and observations for evaluation for professional feedback and growth. And we are, we're well on the way of that. So two of our, two of our five evaluators, three of our evaluators are trained in one system, so we're going to get the other two evaluated in the same system. So all five will be evaluated in the same system and using the same tool for observation The mentor leadership team, I'm particularly proud of this. It's a teacher-led, it's a new teacher induction and mentoring team. We have a team of teachers who are, who are running this and mentoring all of our, all of our new staff. And it really creates, it creates the framework. If you're coming into our district, this is, these are our expectations, this is what is, we're about, this is what's okay, this is what isn't, these are, this is the way that we, this is our identity and how we identify ourselves. And if, I've said this many times, but if a teacher is going to leave the profession forever, they're going to do it during their first three years. And that's why we have this support in place there. And I'm, again, I'm particularly proud of the way that this initiative is taken on. So instructional leadership team activities, we have built in time for collaborative inquiry into teaching practices and student learning. We've expanded the co-teachings of delivering responsive differentiated instruction in inclusive settings where our neediest students received, received coordinated instruction from two highly qualified teachers. And this is a, this is a model shift for us, but, but very much in line with the spirit of special education delivery. And then the curriculum-based measurements, Brenda's been, been able to expand this work from Morris into the middle school and provide real-time student progress data to guide instruction. So we're getting data back in a, in a timely manner. We can make course corrections for students in a timely manner and not wait until the, the end of a marking period for them to discover that there was something they were struggling that they, they can get that. If something needs to be re-taught or gone over, or if there's a section of the class that, that doesn't get it, this, this allows, this allows that to happen. So if there are questions about number two? Okay. Three, coherent and viable curriculum with rigor and relevance. Goals to ensure standards-aligned curriculum that promotes critical thinking, authentic literacy and primary, as a primary learning vehicle. So authentic literary, literacy focus emphasizes reading and writing and discussion is central to the instruction across contact, content areas. And the research supports that the more effort we put into literacy, the better students do across all subject areas, not just ELA. Close reading and diverse texts, this is a Morris accomplishment this year, is grade level teams use culturally relevant materials promote comprehension and engagement. Again, the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment falls under this goal as two, supporting curriculum alignment, expanding formative and summative student assessments and sharing vertical instructional goals across grade levels. So the more, the more in line we are from grade level to grade level, the easier it is for students to transition from one grade to the next. The more that teachers know what is being taught for the grade before them and the grade after them, the better they are able to meet students where they're at and take them to where they need to be. Collective efficacy. So John Hattie, who's a well-regarded researcher, says that this is the, actually is the largest lever that a school can have, is when we're fostering shared ownership and high expectations. And we can do this through structures such as our professional learning teams and co-teaching, professional, paraprofessional, professional development. So we've made a concerted effort to expand our training. Previously, it appeared to be more educator, teacher-centered. So we're looking, we've been working, making, again, a concerted effort to train, provide training opportunities for our paras. And while their roles different from teachers in, in several significant ways, they're vital to instruction and they should never feel that they're second-class citizens. We, we're moving systematically to support their career advancement for those who wish to obtain an educator's license. And, and those that don't, in our, in our robust PD, we are looking to have more opportunities that are specific to, specific to Paris. Middle School English Language Arts Interventionist, thank you for your support of that. Thank you to the town for passing the budget that includes this. We've had a math interventionist and now we will have an ELA interventionist in middle school, be able to target reading and writing support to address learning and gaps before they become special education referrals. And that's part of our, part of our MTSS plan, our multi-tiered support system, is to have more interventions before special education. They, we are, we are hoping with the building project, they have the science lab additions, part of this, the labs that we have now were, are out of date, they were put in during Lyndon Johnson's administration. And so a lot has changed. The word, they didn't use the word STEAM back then, and now we do. So we're hoping to design labs to support rigorous inquiry-based STEAM learning. And if you're not interested, not familiar with STEAM, it's STEM with the A for arts, so STEAM. Budget alignment with a, with a mission. The Assistant Superintendent and I have worked together to start to move the budgeting process and ownership over to be more site-based so that the principals previously weren't, weren't given the type of access that we feel that they should have to the budget. They were, they would call, ask a question, Melissa would answer the question and then they'd move on. And we really are looking to give them that, to give them that full understanding and the broad scope of, of their budgets. And not only will it help them do their current jobs better, but, but down the road, if they, if they move on to be district leaders, they will, that skill will benefit them greatly. That is three. Question?
Well, a question just on curriculum side of things. I'm sure the sort of actual curriculum itself, the textbooks, if nothing else, is it, are we in a position now where we sort of have all of the programs we want and they, or are there things that are going to be focused on there?
There are things that are going to, there are, there are some things in focus that need to be done. And I'd like to make, and I'd like to make a distinction because the, what, what we're working toward is regardless of the curriculum, to have our educators to be able to understand the research, the science, the art of teaching. And so then regardless of what curriculums come and go, because curriculums come and go in the latest greatest, but they'll know the science of teaching math, the science and research base of literacy instruction. So we're really working toward that and we're starting to move away from some of the canned products to bring in, bring in experts to, in addition to, in addition to Brenda, to educate folks. Again, because curriculums come and go and the, the, the science of the pedagogy stays. That's helpful, but you will see some, you will see some, some shifts there. And I don't know if that captured it? Yeah. All right. And to conclude, so the relevance for all students, to connect instruction to students' lives and experiences through authentic community-based learning. And so we're, we are, we're working to expand our, our pathways programs and we've seen that expand. Community cross-school engagement activities such as cultural sessions, Spanish III reading partnerships, trying to create some real-world relevance to what is being learned and, and opportunities to be able to apply it. Updated program of studies at LMHS enable students to explore courses and align them with their interest and goals through digital tools. As, as you mentioned at the town meeting, we're, we're dipping our toe into AI. And so we partnered with the Day of AI, which was originated from MIT as a program to guide schools and provide us with resources. And so we're one of the schools that gets the, for a year, the complete free resources and support from these, these experts in, in AI, in the exploration of how to prepare students for a world where artificial intelligence is going to loom large. And so how to, instead of us inventing this along the way, the idea would be that we've got these experts to help guide us instead of us figuring this out just on our own. And then we've extended our, extended our business partnerships and we're looking to strengthen career-connected learning with local businesses and organizations. And our guidance department has, has done that. As you know, we have a, we have a young lady that's got an internship in, in an operating theater, an emergency room, operating theater, which it's, it was something she had interest in and able to, able to make that connection. in and able to, able to make that connection. And we are, we're, we're nimble enough to be able to do that. And then this is in development, but the exit, the exit interview process, to gather graduate and transfer feedback to inform us of how we're doing, what we're doing, what, and what, what we can do better. So in conclusion, Lennox Public Schools continues to strengthen its commitment to safety, instructional quality, inclusivity, and community engagement grounded in strategic goals and open to continuous improvement. Our work remains focused on student success and well-being. If there are any, if there are any questions, you know, I, I always put the instructional floor right there at the top, because that's what it is about, students, teachers, and content, and how we as a school have those needs related.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, and in today's elegantly crafted agenda, we segue seamlessly into superintendent's The committee is responsible for preparing Dr. Collins's evaluation each year, which we do by all members of the committee sort of completing their own version and then a synthesized one that reflects a consensus where box answers have to be checked and then synthesized comments. And I think the top-line message is simply that the, the entire committee was entirely delighted by, by as you've just presented, the, the work that you've done this past year. The, the overall rating is exemplary, impact on student learning is high, and I just wanted to highlight a few of the things that, that stood out for folks. I think one that has stuck with, with many people is just your mantra of every student, every day, which speaks to a lot of the themes you just touched on in terms of obviously student-centered inclusiveness and, and just the consistency and steadiness of, of the leadership that we now have in the schools. I think there was a lot of emphasis on, on the degree to which you seek input and, and with humility are always eager to hear different perspectives, acknowledge and address mistakes. And, you know, that, that veracity, dedication, adaptability, and collaboration, and wisdom, all, all good words to, to have associated with superintendent. I think definitely stands out to everyone that, that you are ever-present at, at school events in schools and representing the schools in, in the community. And I, I like this point that it, it would be difficult to imagine a superintendent obtaining a higher approval rating than I think you probably have with, with staff, with parents, with students throughout the community. It is a difficult job that lends itself to all sorts of conflicts and dissatisfaction and problems, and somehow you, I, I know it's not because you're avoiding them, but you are addressing and resolving them in a way that, that I think leaves, leaves everybody very proud of, of our schools. So it then goes into more detail, but we are especially thrilled that you've accepted a new contract who will be with us for at least another four years. And I certainly give you my thanks and admiration, and also if others on the committee had other things they wanted to highlight, you're welcome to introduce them.
I, I'd like to also comment that in the process of our evaluation, and Orin, you mentioned, but there are two, thank you for their service, you know, Bob and Dave had a chance to give their input as well, which was really helpful, is that we have a chance to see, I don't know what you call it, but the evaluation of your team and how, and how they talk about, how they work with you. And you highlighted on that a little bit, but I think for me, that was kind of one of the first documents I looked at, because you mentioned in your goals a lot of very significant things to work on that we have been asking for as a community and myself at the number of years I've known the school committee for a very long time. And the question is always, how do you create, I always ask this question, how do you create great school culture? And there's lots of moving parts to it, and you've literally, it would be like the, the roadmap to what to do is in working, but the very most important is to build a team that you have faith and trust in, because you can't sit in their pocket and do their job for them, and that they have faith and trust in you. So that they can each do their, everyone can each do their own jobs, but have the ability to collaborate. And I think what I'm seeing is that ability, that trust that was mentioned, the ability to build a team, work together, hear their ideas, and have those ideas and collaboration built into every aspect of what you're doing. And to me, that's true leadership. It is also just really a great way to run an organization, and when things, as you said, problems arise, you already have that trust to be able to say, okay, there's something we have to dig a little deeper because of whatever the problem is. And I really, that's been my experience as a school committee member, from the very first time we met, to talk about issues, that you're open and willing to work through something and hear different perspectives, and actually will at first lay some tackle, what is the job of this? And it's not, it's not a do-as-I-say or any of that. It really is a team effort with respect and trust and care. And so I really, really appreciate that.
I would just like to say that I love the approachability. You're so approachable, whether it's a school committee member, whether it's a parent, whether it's staff, and your approachability is to be commended. Never once have I felt like, you know, I was bothering you. You're, you're always very, very open. I came to you today with the situation, and the thing that stuck, I hung up, and the thing that stuck out the most about what you said to me was, you know, you own, you own, when, when, you own it, you own it. If you, if you've tried something, it didn't work, you always own it. But more importantly, you will continue to look in, you'll continue to dig deep until you actually have an answer for us, or for a parent, or community member. The fact that you dig deep, it's not just, well, because I said so, and it's my job, and it's what I do. You know, you're, you're, you, you talk to other people, you gather the information, you make thoughtful decisions, and that, I think that's really, really important, really important. And I could go on, but most of it's already been said, so. But I like the fact that when you own it, you own it, and, but I also know that the due diligence is there before any decisions are made.
Thank you very much.
All right. I, yeah, I'd love to take full credit for all this, but as you mentioned, it, it is a team, and, and it's, I really feel like we have the A-team and the admin team. We can have incredibly difficult conversations. We've reached a point where we can challenge each other, and that's, I think, where the real breakthroughs start to happen. And it's a, yeah, it's a, it's a very good team. Everyone comes with a slightly different perspective and different talents and experiences, but again, together, there's a, there's a synergy. So a, a lot of what happens really belongs to, to these guys. Thank you.
I'd like to hereby officially present to you the evaluation.
Thank you.
And thank you. Our final item on the agenda for tonight is the Unit A contract, which we've been hearing about for a while. The standard process is that the teachers will review and vote on it first, so they have already ratified it. And now it falls to us to approve it as well, at which point it will be the formal contract for the next three years. And so Unit A covers our professional teaching staff, and what you have in the agenda is both the full 80-page contract, but then what's called the settlement agreement, which is basically attract changes of every provision that was actually addressed in these negotiations, and then on top of that, a summary of what those changes actually are. So I just wanted to provide a few highlights from that, but also certainly, you know, happy old myself and Dr. Collins and, and Kim Graham, who are on the committee, can, for negotiating, can, can answer any questions. In terms of sort of the most significant changes, I would say there are probably four. One, that's always central negotiation, is just the, the salary schedule and compensation. And in general, we agreed upon increases over the next three years, that would be 3%, 3 and 1/4%, and then 3%. But notably, that is essentially for the top half of the schedule, so for the more senior teachers. For the, the lower half of the schedule, for teachers in their earlier years, we made a change in the structure, just going really bumping up what, a starting salary. So as of this past year, a starting salary for a, a teacher on step one would have been about $50,000. By the end of this contract, it will be $63,000. So almost a 25% increase, maybe a little bit more. And, you know, what we really wanted to do was, first of all, make Lennox as, as attractive a place as possible to be attracting new talent, but also to, to recognize the, the type of preparation and work that goes into becoming a teacher and making sure that those are really good jobs right at the beginning. So typically, we present a contract and say, this keeps us exactly in line with everybody else. That is true. The top half of the schedule here, it very intentionally throws us dramatically higher than, than others in the region. And I think that will certainly be a huge benefit to us. Obviously, it will be a benefit to our newer teachers, and at the end of the day, the cost is just not very happy, because at any point, the share of our teachers who are those newer teachers is quite low. And so, you know, essentially with, with the teachers in the negotiation, we've both kind of agreed on what's, what's the total amount that Lennox can afford to be, to our costs. And as you've already seen in, in the budget approved at, at town meeting, we were able to do that in a responsible way. But then within that, there was an agreement among everybody, let's shift a little bit extra of the value to those new teachers, which I think will be a huge benefit. So we're very proud to be able to do that. The second piece, which is then somewhat related, is also to provide full reimbursement for new teachers as they pursue a master's degree. And so, you know, we always have a standard reimbursement for teachers during professional development, but that we're not opposed to covering the cost of the masters. And so now for newer teachers, we're able to offer that as well. That's something that we had done during the past contract as an MOA, and so that will now become a permanent part. One that was a lot of fun and a great example of sort of creative problem-solving, I, I don't even remember, I think this started out as a question about how to handle coaches and others who might need to leave school early for a performance or a competition, and ended up being a much more, a much broader discussion about how to provide more flexibility to teachers in a way that also provide more flexibility to the district. And with how the system works, we can actually do all of sick days, personal days as hours instead. And so as of the new contract, all of, everything that has ever been accounted for in days will instead be accounted for in hours, and teachers will have the option of not having to take a day off, but if they need to take an hour, or two hours, or a half day, or a full day, they can do that. And then that also means when we're looking for a substitute, we can look for that substitute. And, and so teachers can be away from the classroom less, and students can have their teachers in front of them more. So we also hired a few teachers in the spring, and everyone seemed very happy with it. Melissa has, has made it work. All, all the numbers get much bigger when you do hours instead of days, but I'm assured that, that the system still works. And then finally, one that was really important to the committee was structure and retirement for teachers in a way that really created an incentive to stay through the end of the year, instead of potentially retiring mid-year, when you hit a retirement date. And the way that we ended up agreeing to do that was taking what's called the retirement allowance, which is basically the, the payout of unused days that you get when you retire, and assigning two different values to it. So someone who retires mid-year, over the next couple of years, what those days are worth will actually phase down a little bit. Whereas someone who retires at the end of the year, that will increase significantly. And so it'll depend on how many days you have, but there could be, you know, ultimately a $10,000 difference between retiring mid-year and staying till the end of the year. And again, because we're offsetting on both sides, it's not a lot of cost to the district, but it creates much better incentives and rewards to teachers who, who do finish out the year. So those ones I'd want to be sure to, to highlight, because I think they'll, they'll really make a difference in, ultimately, in every single case for, for having the highest quality features in, in front of students as much as possible, which was everybody's shared goal. There are lots of much smaller things from defining the end of the day based on when the buses depart, to making sure we have a stipend for teachers who are on overnight field trips, and, and so on and so forth. But I don't know if there are any other ones that, Cam, where you wanted to highlight?
Really, again, I, I would highlight the process, we sat around the table and somebody would say, I know we can't do this, but, and, and Orin would say, well, wait, why, why can't we? What, what inhibits us from being able to do this? So some of these ideas that you, you know, may not see in neighboring contracts are outside of the box, creative thinking that are going to make it better for our employees, better to be able to attract and retain employees. And I think at the end of the day, better for, better for students.
That was a common theme was better for students, like going hourly instead of, you know, if you're a doctor's appointment, you really only need to take an hour off. In the past, you would have to take a half a day or a full day. And the goal was to keep the teacher in the classroom in front of the students as much as possible. So by going hourly, they could actually just take the time that they need and be able to return to the classroom. The retirement incentive keeps the teacher, you know, there, hopefully will keep a teacher there for the full year rather than disrupting the classroom, the kiddos, you know, halfway through the year, on a birthday or whatever. So I liked the fact that, you know, a lot of the conversation, it was really about what was best for the student.
I have a quick question. Because I'm just looking at it right now. I see the chart about the additional course per, so in that, a lot of the changes were made, we've just kind of reallocating the numbers to fit in with, maybe accelerating them to a more appropriate compensation based upon the overall scheme?
Yes, yeah. There are a few places where, excuse me, the math gets really funny, because other values in the contract are tied to that first called BA step one. So what is the lowest amount in the contract? And because we were really bumping that up, that was not intended to bump up all the other values. So there's a bunch of funky math to basically bump it up and then scale it back down to where it should be, so that when we get to the end of this three years, those values have all grown by the standard amount, not by the higher year-one amount.
One of the reasons why I'm noticing that, and I really appreciate, and first of all, appreciate the funky math part, because that is not my thing, but I appreciate that you might not realize that many of, many of our faculty will take on an extra course or half course, or they will take on duties either to provide some robust electives, which for such a small school often wouldn't be available, and/or to, for meeting the needs of all students and not having huge class sizes, sometimes when we don't need another whole teacher or another whole section, but we do need to break things, you know, again, this is an opportunity to meet the needs of students by having teachers who are willing to do the extra, which means they have extra on everything, and having their compensation be fair and appropriate is really a benefit to students, and it's a very efficient way of running the school. So thank you all for doing that, including the teachers that take on extra. And again, sometimes I think it's also because there's something that they're really kind of jazzed about, that they want to be able to teach and bring to students, and the students get that opportunity to have a teacher who's excited and a subject that doesn't justify a whole, you know, faculty hire or something. So that's, I really appreciate the responsibility of that.
So that's, I really appreciate the responsibility on that, and then you doing the funky math.
He was good at the funky math, by the way. He was also very quick at the funky math.
Quick funky math.
Quick funky math, Orin's specialty.
He was great to have.
No, I mean, I just echo Ronnie's point. The one other thing I'll say, you know, we certainly appreciated the process with the teachers. One thing I love about being involved in it is just how much more appreciation it gives me for the teachers. I mean, the amount of times we'd get to some part in the contract and I'd just think like, oh, wow, that's not a lot of money for that at all. I mean, the teachers do what they do, obviously, because they love it and are so committed to the kids. And the fact that so many of them are going above and beyond constantly is what makes it an incredible, incredible school.
So sorry, I couldn't.
No, that was. So if there aren't any other questions, we can approve or I guess disapprove the contract?
I would be happy to make a motion that we approve the Unit A contract for 2025 through 2028 as presented here tonight.
I'll second that with our thanks to the negotiating team.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We have a contract, and we have arrived at the end of the meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
The arranger, thank you very much.